Okay, you can go ahead and start when you're ready, Mayor. Please state your here when I call your name. Mayor Ritter, Deputy Mayor Rigby, Councilmember Franklin, Councilmember Green, Councilmember Contreras, and also joining us are City Manager Patrick Johnson and City Attorney Daryl Piper.
Of course, the hospital capacity issue that we're facing right now, or some aren't facing for that matter. But that's stage one, so that's what we're in right now. And then there's stage two, and this is gradually opening lower workplace risk areas. So what that might mean is retail stores would have pickup. Manufacturing businesses would be allowed to open with physical distancing for employees. Offices where there's telecommunities not a possibility would allow, be allowed to have employees back in it. And of course, more public spaces being opened as is occurring right now. The governor described that this stage two will happen in a matter of weeks, not months. And so I don't know how many weeks that is. I don't know what the time is, but he did say that the curve would have to flat, continue to flatten, and then this stage could be opened up. And then there's stage three, which is opening higher risk environments and with some limits. So these would be like personal care businesses, such as a salon, a nail place, or a gym would be one of those. Entertainment venue would be another. That would include movie theaters and sporting events without audiences. Live audiences, I should say. And then the third in that category that he listed was in-person religious services. So that would be obviously churches, and then weddings would be part of that. The governor described that this stage would happen in a matter of months, but he did not say when, so I don't know what the timetable would be for that. And then the final stage is stage four, which is the end of the stay-at-home order and the reopening of venues that have concerts, convention centers, as well as live audience sports. And there was no timetable given for this, but it appeared that as long as, or as we got closer to either widespread testing or a vaccine, if that was possible, that stage four would come to a complete. So those are the four stages that the governor described today. Again, his words, just wanted to pass them along. So that's an update from the state. And then as it relates to the county, and this is what I wanted to focus on. Today, there was a total number of cases in the county overall has been 3,314 cases. And the total number of deaths is at 101,18, excuse me, 118 deaths. And then the total number of cases in Vista is 50 cases. So that is the statistics for the county. Starting Friday, what will affect everybody in the county is new protocol that goes into effect from May 1st. And that is where all people are required to wear face coverings if they go out in public and especially public spaces or areas where they're going to be within six feet of another person that's not part of their household units. And so what they said today was they just encourage everybody to wear a face covering in public, and that would cover it. But at the very least, if you're going to go out in public, you have to have a face covering with you while you're in public. Another protocol that goes into effect Friday will be rules for social distancing for, and sanitation protocol for parks and beaches. And so this protocol requires that if the city has a park that's open, which as all of you know, we do, we have the correct signage, if our restrooms are open, that there's a cleaning schedule that's adhered to, and that we have staff that either is onsite or, in our case, which would be patrolling, which would look for crowds and gatherings outside of household units to ensure physical distancing. And so what we learned today with this protocol is that it's still being refined. So we were, received a draft copy of the protocol on Friday. We've been trying to figure out how we're going to adhere to that protocol, but we were told today that some of the items on that protocol will be refined over the next couple of days. So I may have more to share with you, or things may change, or we may adapt to it. The protocol will also allow us to open the park parking lots. And this is something that the health order has mandated that parking lots for beaches and parks be closed. And so currently, as it's written, we will need to cordon off every other space in parking lots. So no two cars could park next to one another. And that, in our case, in Vista, we would probably block off certain areas of the parking lot that weren't needed. And then the main areas that we think would be used, we will have a plan to coordinate every other space to be blocked off. As I mentioned earlier, the protocol does call for restrooms to be cleaned currently every two hours. And that is certainly not something that we could, that's reasonable from a financial perspective. So since our parks are only open on a passive use basis, the recommendation would be to close the restrooms. However, after having a conversation today with the county, there may be some leniency on this, and we may be allowed to open our restrooms without having the two-hour cleaning as long as we're doing a deep cleaning daily. So if we get more direction on that and we're able to keep our restrooms open, that would be preferred. If we do close the restrooms, we have requested from the county that they provide handwashing stations for those passive park areas. So again, from a passive use, you're able to go to the park, take a walk, take a jog, take your dog, walk as a household unit without gathering. But active amenities like basketball courts, tennis courts, pickleball, in our case, bocce ball, will not be allowed. And our two skate parks are not open as well because they're considered active uses. And we do have our park directors, we have our code enforcement officers that are going through the parks multiple times a day, patrolling the parks to educate the public on all this. And I would be remiss if I didn't say thank you very much to Public Works. There's been a lot of people that have been involved in this process, but Public Works dropped everything last week and did what they could to provide signage and reopening the parks last Friday. And then we get the new rules or protocols on Friday night, and now they're making a lot of modifications to make sure that we're in compliance on May 1st, which is Friday. So I do want to say thank you to Public Works. Next up, I wanted to touch on our senior population, and I think it's important to remind the public that at the Gloria McClellan Adult Activity Center, they are providing lunches and dinners to the public, to the senior public, I should say. And they do this on Monday and Wednesdays. They allow for curbside pickup or they allow for delivery. And so if anybody in our public is interested in that, you make a reservation with the center, and we will take care of the rest for you if you're not able to come by and get it. We also provide transportation services for groceries and appointments and things like that. So if you're interested, if the member of the public's interested, they can call 760-643-5288, Monday through Friday between the hours of 8:00 and 3:30 to make a reservation. Normally, we talk about economic development and business development, but since we have item D1 on the agenda today that's going to discuss economic development in the loan program, I will let our Economic Development Director Kevin Hamm take care of that. And just in closing, I want to say that your Vista employees have been working very, very hard for you during this time and for the public. And it's a constantly changing environment, and I'm very proud of the work and how we've adapted as an organization to keep serving the public and to keep services going. And I just want to acknowledge their hard work. And I also want to say thank you to each of you, City Council, for your patience during this time and your understanding that it is a fluid situation and things change, but we're doing the best we can to adapt. So just wanted to say thank you, and unless there's any other comments or questions for me, I turn it back over to the mayor.
And on behalf of the City Council, we thank you and all of our employees, Public Works for all that they do. And all of our employees, they're making, making do a difficult situation here. So we'll move on to our consent calendar here.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, yes?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
Have our hands up.
I didn't stand. You have to wave at me.
Okay, so when we talk about redoing the parking lot, and I understand that we have to block off every other one or every, every second or third one, I don't want to lose the number of handicap parking spaces that we have because I anticipate everybody's going to want to be in the first spaces at the end of the trail or over by the picnic table or whatever. But we need to, if you have to take the first handicap spot, then you got to get rid of the next one. We need to make temporary signs for our handicap. I don't want to lose the number of handicap spots that we have. So I just want to put that out there.
We will not lose the number of handicap spots. I can assure you of that. And typically with the handicap spots, there is a, there's a divider between the spots in most cases to allow access to get out. And so those will still be provided. I can assure you of that.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
And good job, everybody. You're doing a really great job in these difficult times, and it is very, very much appreciated.
No more waves. Oh, on Summer Green.
Yeah.
And then Contreras. First Green.
Okay, sorry about that. Two questions that I had for you. Number one is, you talked about the governor. He said phase one will have to do with bed capacity. And I saw a graph today on our county website that our bed capacity, it looks like we're using 3,295 beds. 363 of those are COVID-related, but our capacity is over 5,000, and we're licensed up to 6,500. So since we're not using that bed capacity, does that allow the county to move on to phase two sooner? So that's my first question for you.
And since I didn't write, I didn't write this plan, so I don't have all the answers for you. But I know I did say hospital capacity in phase one, that would be up to the governor and what they might work out with county. But I would think that the governor is going to do it across the state. If he, if he's going to move on to stage two, it would be statewide versus county by county, probably create a lot of.
So we don't have the ability to prove, so we don't have the ability to provide what our county numbers are to the state so that we can move on quicker than maybe some other counties that are more affected?
No, I don't believe so. I believe it's, it's for the whole state.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure that I had that clear. And then number two is on May 1st, which is Friday, when the county health order goes into effect about masks, will our local sheriffs here in the city of Vista be enforcing that mask order? If they see people just walking around, you know, our parks per se, and they don't have a mask on or a mask on their person, can they be cited for that within our city?
They could be, but our goal first and foremost would be education. We have signage around the parks that talks about wearing a mask. If you're with your household unit, though, and it's just, just you, let's just say you and your wife as an example, and there's nobody else around you, then technically a mask is not required. However, when you come in contact or within six feet of somebody else, that's where you need a mask. Or if you go into a public space like a grocery store or an essential work environment, you need to have a mask. The recommendation from the county, the request, is that everybody just have a mask on, and you alleviate the issue from taking a mask on and off of your face. But our goal, to your question, our goal would be that the sheriff's department would go out, code enforcement would do it as well. And so with the park directors, they'd educate people first and foremost before we started handing out citations. That's not our goal.
I got you, but even like me walking my dog during the day, since I have the potential of coming within six feet of somebody, technically, I should have a mask on my person at least, even if I'm not wearing it per the county health order.
Absolutely. So that, so what the, the health officer said today was, you should have a mask. If it's a neck gaiter, if it's a mask, you should at least have it on your face or near your face so you can pull it up when you come in contact with somebody else that's not in your household.
Okay, thank you so much for the information, Mr. Johnson. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Contreras.
Thank you so much. And you know, some of my questions were actually answered. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Rigby. Definitely wanted to get clarification to make sure that folks that have, that are able to have the ability to also access our parks and passively get some, some sun and exercise. So that's good to hear. And what's the timeframe again that we should see parking implemented here in the city of Vista?
So, so within our parks.
Time frame's been a little bit wonky.
Yeah, so our park, park, our park parking lots have been closed due to the health order. We're expecting that's going to be lifted on Friday, May 1st. So our plan is to open our parking lots up to some capacity starting on Friday.
Okay, perfect. And you know, in thinking about the issue with the public restrooms, you know, and the cost of keeping them nice and clean, and thank you, Patrick, for, you know, having those conversations with the county because, you know, every two hours does become fairly, just at an administrative level, that's a little bit difficult, right, for all of our parks. But in thinking about the request for handwashing stations, and if we're still able to keep our bathrooms open, you know, for individuals that, you know, just maybe want to wash their hands or whatever the case, going into restroom, the facility itself is kind of like a pressure point that may not allow for the type of six-feet physical distancing that's necessary right now. So I think that it would probably be a good decision to, even if we have our public restrooms open, to make sure that we're utilizing handwashing stations here in the city of Vista just to ensure that the public doesn't have to be put in a situation where there's not six feet available if you just want to, you know, make sure that your hands are nice and clean. So I just wanted to throw that out there. But my main concern was access when we're talking about parking. So thank you again to our deputy mayor for that question.
Okay, and seeing no other hands waving, looking, looking, then we'll move on to our consent calendar. And the only other thing I would add to Patrick's, to our city manager's thing is that I heard today from the governor was that he wants the schools to open like in the end of July, or the end of July, which would be earlier than, than normal. Because they usually start in August. So he said that the kids, you know, had missed out on some of their educations. Maybe he wanted to start the schools, back to school earlier this, this summer. So I thought that was kind of interesting. And so we'll have to wait to hear, you know, what the final thing is on that. So with that, we can go with the consent calendar. And the recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by making a request to the clerk secretary and the public, at publiccomments@thecityofvista.com. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. And we have 12 consent items this evening, and I want to know, there is a request to move item C3, but I want to know if any of the city council members would like to remove an item. So I guess I'll go by each one. So I'll start with Deputy Mayor Rigby. Is there anything you want to remove?
No, Madam Mayor, I have none to remove.
Okay, then, and then as I go along, one of you might make a motion, so.
Oh, I can move that we approved that calendar.
Okay, how about Councilmember Franklin?
I'll second the motion. I have nothing to remove.
Okay, Councilmember Green?
I have nothing to remove, Madam Mayor.
Okay, and Councilmember Contreras?
Nothing to remove. Thank you.
Okay, so we do have that request to remove item C3. So the public comment portion of the consent calendar is now closed. Do we have any other items, City Clerk, Kathy?
Nope, just C3.
Okay, so then the comment portion of the consent calendar is now closed. And I have a motion, Deputy Mayor Rigby, and a second by Councilmember Franklin for the balance of the consent calendar. And so please give us a roll call vote. All right, if you'll give me your vote when I call your name, please. Mayor Ritter? Yes. Deputy Mayor Rigby, sorry.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye. That is unanimously.
Okay, so with that, I will, I will now take item C3. And I'd like to have the Community Development Director John Conley brought into the meeting now. And would anybody like a staff report or to ask questions before we hear a public comment on the item? Wave at me if you want to hear, if anybody has a question or anything before. And I don't see anybody waving at me. So then, City Clerk Valdez, do you want to read the public comment, please?
Thank you. The first is from Erica Leary, North Coastal Prevention Coalition. Dear Mayor and Council, the current COVID-19 crisis is causing all of us to gain new perspectives, shift priorities, assess the importance of public health, and take action for the common good. Given that this crisis leads to potentially fatal outcomes of respiratory failure, adopting local policies that will further expand access and availability of products that are smoked seems worth reconsidering. In addition, the San Diego region is now averaging nearly 30 ER visits per day due to marijuana. As you discussed, the most prudent ways to support the health and safety of all Vista residents, I'd encourage you to consider the following. High school juniors in Vista report higher rates of marijuana use compared to alcohol and tobacco. How does delivery impact youth access to marijuana? Are there enforcement protocols in place to reduce both illegal and legal delivery to minors? Given the known dangers of smoking, has Vista considered prohibiting the manufacture, distribution, and delivery of smoking and vaping cannabis products? Medical cannabis is available to those 18 and older. How will Vista enforce delivery of both medical and adult-use cannabis? The state has no regulations around potency. How will high potent THC products impact our residents' and ER visits? Thank you for your consideration and service to Vista. The next is from Kathleen Lippett, Coastal Communities Drug-Free Coalition. As an advocate of sound public policies as well as a member of the general public, it is alarming to see how disconnected public officials have become to the attitudes and concerns of the general public. It is clear that an inordinate amount of staff time was spent on creating these amendments on behalf of marijuana industry profiteers. As publicly elected officials, your time should be narrowly focused on the needs, concerns, risks, and well-being of your, of your constituents, constituents, sorry, during the COVID-19 epidemic and the effects of social isolation. Instead, the council continues to pursue facilitating the birth and growth of commercial marijuana industry in which, which will displace existing sensitive uses, churches, minor-oriented facilities, treatment and recovery centers, and community-friendly businesses whose limited resources will be no match for the deep pockets of the marijuana industry. The hand-printed marijuana industry lobbying efforts and influence are evident in these amendments. Staff time spent on drafting, amending, adopting, and updating municipal codes should have spent spent working on behalf of the people who elected you. Continuing your prioritization of pursuing and permitting of marijuana operation undermines the confidence and faith placed in you. The priority and focus of council members elected to serve Vista residents should be to serve Vista residents, not the interests of for-profit, private, and predatory industry. The next is from Peggy Walker. How sad it is that Vista has come to this, enacting policies that establish it as a pot manufacturing and distribution center, especially in this era of COVID-19 and the vaping crisis. We continue to hear health officials warn that marijuana, THC, and cannabinoids are immunosuppressive, leaving the body unable to fight lung infections and disease. Neither policymakers nor staff seem to be concerned, however. These amendments show much greater interest in promoting the interests of marijuana industry than concern for public and community character. In preparing their reports, staff did not address a number of issues. Among them, how will neighboring businesses find resources to odors interfering with their businesses? Or will how, or how will the city dispose of hazardous waste created by manufacturer and discarded customer products made from marijuana known to be toxic? Identifying solutions for toxic litter from pot products is a growing concern of the DEA and hazmat specialists and is becoming a serious issue for schools and cities. As staff prepare detailed municipal code amendments permitting the manufacture and distribution of the psychotropic drug, who is looking after the public, I urge you to postpone this item and the printing process. This is not the time. The next is from Barbara Gordon. Mayor and City Councilmembers, I urge the City Council to postpone any decision as our nation navigates the current pandemic with COVID-19. As someone who works with youth, with a youth group regarding public health education, especially providing services to Latino students, I want to share this American Lung Association article regarding the hazards of tobacco, marijuana use, and vaping. It is noteworthy that during this era, COVID-19 substantiates valid reasons why the city does not need more marijuana businesses. The attached Lung Association released states, which was emailed to you. Smoking marijuana clearly damages the human lung. Person lungs' first line of defense against infection by killing cells that help remove dust and germs can cause injury to cell linings of large airways leading to chronic cough, wheezing, and acute bronchitis, and suppresses the immune system. And it states, no one should be exposed to secondhand marijuana smoke, which contains toxins and carcinogens. COVID-19 attacks the lungs and could be a serious threat to those smoking marijuana. Not only are lungs and respiratory systems affected by the immune system and the body's ability to fight off the disease, I'm concerned with permitting more marijuana businesses. You will be normalizing and commercializing marijuana, which is damaging to public health and especially to youth. It seems the marijuana industry has influenced your decisions with this ordinance instead of what's best for the citizens of Vista. We need public health experts to guide decisions, not the marijuana industry. The next is from Rebecca Rapp. Good evening, Mayor Ritter and City Councilmembers. My name is Becky Rapp. I'm a mother of six and a youth church leader. It's alarming to me that during a pandemic such as this one, we're living in, the one we're living in, the council and staff would take time to amend municipal code for the marijuana industry. COVID-19 is a respiratory disease, and smoking marijuana causes respiratory illness. I would ask you to postpone any action you might take on this action. A recent CNN article regarding smoking weed and the coronavirus clearly explains how marijuana use can cause severe complications when COVID-19 is contracted. Pulmonologist Dr. Albert Rizzo, chief medical officer for the American Lung Association, states, what happens to your airways when you smoke cannabis is that it causes inflammation very similar to bronchitis, very similar to the type of inflammation that cigarette smoking can cause. Dr. Glass, pulmonologist of the American Lung Association, tells us the marijuana burns at a much, much lower temperature than a commercially-made cigarette. Because of that, the person is inhaling a certain amount of unburnt plant material that irritates the lungs in the same manner as ragweed, birch, and oak palm does for those allergic to them. Therefore, there are those patients who would be increasingly susceptible to having a bronchospasm or cough because they have a more sensitive airway. Since a dry cough is a key sign of COVID-19, any cough caused by smoking a joint of weed could easily mimic that symptom, making diagnosis more difficult. I would urge you to postpone this decision until the public has a fair chance to weigh in. I respectfully suggest that you take time to research the negative effects of smoking marijuana and the negative impact it has on lungs. of smoking marijuana and the negative impact it has on lungs. If the city is concerned with the health of Vista residents, especially in regards to COVID-19, then I ask you, why is more time not spent on educating yourselves among, along with your citizens, and healthy lung function rather than accommodating marijuana business? Thank you." Next is from Terri Ann Skelly. Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I'm a mother of three, young adult sons, and I work with programs to protect young men and encourage them to be successful. I respectfully ask that you reconsider adding more marijuana businesses in the city. I wonder if you really understand the consequence of the marijuana storefronts that are operating in Vista now. Marijuana use, visibility, and availability threatens, sabotages, and averts the lives of young people who, right now, are without the benefit of structure and have too much free time, and may well decide that an acceptable form of entertainment or diversion is getting high. The National Monitoring the Future Survey regarding substance use by eighth, tenth, and twelfth graders found that 3.5% of twelfth graders and 3% of tenth graders reported using marijuana every day. Daily use by teenagers is extremely risky behavior and can lead to negative physical and mental health outcomes. It also found that the number of twelfth graders who said they had baked marijuana, the most common method of use by teens, within the past three days almost doubled from 7% to 4% last year, 7% to 14% last year. It's the second-largest increase in the use of any substance over a one-year period since the survey began in 1975. Marijuana vaping cartridges are the most often manufactured marijuana product, and marijuana manufacturing is a very business you are considering. Marijuana storefronts were pushed onto you. However, marijuana manufacturing is a choice you have, and it does not need to be. Please do not bring marijuana manufacturing to Vista, but the good health of Vista's young people first. This one is from Ken Strange. Dear Mayor and City Council, I write to you as a father and grandfather of five Vista residents. Regarding Agenda Item C3, there seems to be troubling unawareness on the part of City Council regarding using and permitting the very products utilized in smoking and vaping marijuana. It compromises and weakens the human immune system and lungs. And I see that other protections for citizens are missing from the staff report. There is no description regarding who can come to town to operate these businesses. They can be out-of-city, state, nation, or out-of-country operators coming to Vista to explain our citizens. Two, no explanation of community members or businesses who might be adjoining property to these businesses, of the procedure to ask questions or express their concerns. Three, no depiction of the city's capacity to complete forensic investigations regarding where the marijuana is coming from, how its safety is determined, and whether state laws are kept regarding marijuana products or where the marijuana products are going, whether to cities where it isn't allowed, or states or countries. Perhaps exercising an abundance of caution would be the wisest course of action. Postpone your decision tonight until you have more evidence about the marijuana businesses already open in your city, and you have more data regarding the health of your citizens regarding the role that smoking and vaping marijuana play. What would it hurt to wait?" The next is for Katrina Priest. Dear Mayor and City Council, I truly appreciate your work during this health crisis to keep us informed. Thankfully, COVID-19's impact has not been very strong among children and teens since I am a middle school teacher myself, with three children, attend school, and the Vista School District. However, I feel that the city is not protecting our youth by proceeding on a very unfortunate path to increased marijuana businesses in Vista. In addition to being a parent and middle school teacher, I am the daughter of a pharmacist and worked in my father's pharmacy while I went to school. I learned firsthand about the central and damaging role of smoking, and now vaping of tobacco or marijuana, and the ability of patients to fight off other diseases. I also learned through the years that smoking and vaping had a life-changing role in creating a very unhealthy environment for children growing up in that home. In fact, secondhand smoke and vape is considered the number-one contributing factor to childhood asthma. And childhood asthma is the number-one reason children are admitted to hospitals in San Diego County and the number-one reason that children miss school. I'm asking why the city is insisting that some businesses be closed, creating great hardship for the owners and employees. And then, on the other hand, the city is enabling other businesses, marijuana businesses, that will do harm to open. Please consider postponing this decision for another time. Thank you." The next is from Marianne Fletcher. She's with North Coastal Prevention Coalition. Though it's not possible to show NCPC's video of this year's 420 Remix PSA contest winners, we hope to review them on our website. The quotes from students present present an important perspective that adult decision-makers should keep in mind about how marijuana impacts young people. Drugs can be very detrimental, such as vaping, which is a current craze with my generation, teens. Vaping is like an escape from reality and a very unhealthy coping mechanism. I hope my poster is a great reminder to all, without our health, we have nothing." That's from Karen Barrigan of Benita Vista High School. The next was from Jayden Pacheco from Benita Vista High School. The reason why I put so much hard work and passion into my craft is because I once was a victim of marijuana. There was a point in my life where I relied on it. It makes you weak mentally. A lot of people do it for the fun of it. Little do high schoolers know their brains are still developing, and once they get older, they will soon realize intelligence is everything and be full of regret. The next special was Vanessa Ramirez, Benita Vista High School. I really want to spread the awareness of how damaging marijuana can be to developing teenagers. It always made me sad to see people from my class and how drastically they have changed because of marijuana. Students who once tried and got good grades, now failing or barely passing their classes because of the lack of motivation. As a substance, I want future generations to avoid despite it being legal. And the final was from Madison Metalla, Oceanside High School. Life is the most precious gift, and the teenage years are a deciding factor of how that life will be made. Having been a member of my club's chapter of North Coastal Prevention Coalition for three years, I've grown aware of how marijuana can change a teenager's future forever and limit their chances of joy and success. This has driven me to create a message that tells teens they are worth the future they have always wanted, and marijuana has no place in story of their life." The next public comment is from Kelly McCormick. Dear Mayor and City Council members, my name is Kelly McCormick. I'm the mother of two teenagers, and I run a youth mentoring program. I urge you to reconsider the decision to allow marijuana manufacturing businesses. Moving forward with this action now is ill-timed. With the coronavirus pandemic disrupting every aspect of life, city staff time and resources would be better spent developing strategies to help Vista residents and businesses recover. But my primary reason for asking this is to protect the health and well-being of Vista's children, teenagers, and families. By facilitating the pot industry, you are endorsing predatory business practices and enriching the wealthy investors. And sadly, you are normalizing the use of an addictive psychoactive drug. Surveys of Vista middle school and high school students show the potent marijuana vapes are the drug of choice. Meanwhile, the majority hold the false belief that pot is harmless. I don't have to tell you this is a dangerous combination. Marijuana used by those under age 25 can cause permanent harm to the developing brain. And let's not forget about the rash of lung injuries that left thousands of vape users with permanent lung damage, putting many of them on respirators fighting for their lives before COVID-19 waged another assault on respiratory health and the immune system. Finally, the proposed ordinance lacks sufficient protection for potential neighbors of these businesses. The ordinance states that pot businesses will not be allowed within 600 feet of daycare, youth center, or K-12 school. What about churches, libraries, dance studios, music schools, tutoring centers, pediatric, medical, and dental offices, and other facilities that serve children and families? Clearly, these regulations put the desires of the pot industry ahead of public health and safety. Thank you for your consideration. And the final public comment is from Patima Ashak. Dear Mayor and Council, I've been a resident of Vista for the past five years and run an internship program for local college students. I'm concerned with the safety protocols put in place surrounding medical cannabis businesses in Vista. As Vista discussed the concerns around the impact of medical cannabis businesses that medical cannabis has on our younger population, especially issues surrounding normalization and marijuana use. How will Vista be vigilant to enforce delivery of medical cannabis only to adults, with everything moving to delivery with the recent COVID-19 pandemic? I hear from my students that no IDs are being checked for alcohol deliveries. How can we ensure this doesn't happen when medical cannabis is delivered? Thank you. That completes the public comment.
Okay, so I will run through all of our council members here and get questions, comments. Mr. Conley can answer them for you or a motion. So I will start with Councilmember Contreras, although the other way this time.
Yeah, sure. You know, it's always important for us to continue the conversation on cannabis. Definitely with our youth. As you're developing, as your brain is developing, you do not want to be utilizing any kind of substances that could affect your development. So, and I believe that, you know, the rest of my colleagues agree that we definitely do not want to see our youth consume cannabis. So, you know, but one of the things, I just want to clarify for the public because in hearing these comments read out loud, it seems like there is a little bit of a misunderstanding as to what this item is. The people back in 2018, a majority of Vista's did vote in Measure Z. So we're not creating, you know, going back to a decision here that wasn't already made by the public. What needed to happen was that our municipal code did actually was not working in sync completely with what has been authorized by the council. So I appreciate staff making sure that everything is updated and that we are complying with Measure Z completely. But with that, you know, again, it's always important for us as a community to have these conversations. And anybody who wants to have a conversation, like, you know, on cannabis, please reach out to me. You know, this is, it's very important for us to hear from the public. So again, thank you so much to the public for writing in and giving us your concerns. We do hear and take that into consideration with any kind of policy decision. So that's pretty much all I have as a comment.
Councilmember Green?
Exactly, and I just kind of wanted to say the same thing, that we're not really implementing any new policies here. We're just having staff put in writing what we, as a council, already agreed to do here. We are definitely concerned with community safety. That's always at the forefront of our thinking. And I know staff tries to put those, you know, precautions in there as well. We're not influenced by outside sources. We know if this went to a vote, the way our city would go, because we've seen it before. So as a council, we're just trying to be responsible with the policies and the businesses that come into our town. Something that was good is in 2018, when Measure Z was passed, we also passed a taxation so that if we do put new businesses like this in play, we can get revenue for them as a city. So I definitely support staff's recommendation. With that, I will move to approve staff's recommendation as presented on the consent calendar. And I thank you for your time.
Councilmember Franklin?
Yeah, I would even go further just to say that this measure is primarily administrative. It does not allow for any product, any cannabis product that was not made legal for sale in Vista under the Citizens Initiative Measure Z. This measure does not allow for any additional products to be made available for sale. It doesn't allow for any new businesses not authorized by Citizens Measure Z to retail or to otherwise sell products. It does allow for some sundry businesses that are required essentially for the implementation. Testing, for example, distribution businesses that would supply the up to 11 businesses that were authorized by the Citizens Measure. We tried to take a very measured approach here. And we're not, nothing in this measure would allow for any individuals who were not authorized by, like, underage. We haven't expanded the age categories or in any other way increased the accessibility of these products to the public or to any new age category, or made any new types of products available. There was a lot of that kind of information in the materials in the public comment. And as relates to this particular item, it's just not accurate. And I think it's important for the public that's watching this to actually understand what it is that we're doing with this. So, you know, I encourage anybody that has questions about this item to bring them forward to the council and to the city staff. Because, you know, I don't want there to be any misunderstandings about exactly what it is we're doing tonight.
Hey, Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with my colleagues. I appreciate hearing from the public and getting all of the letters that we got and the emails that we received. I appreciate people taking time and energy to be committed to our community. We love that. I love hearing from you. But I do think that some of the letters don't really reflect what is actually before the council and this item. And I'm sad that people think that are put out there that we are working for the cannabis industry. There couldn't be anything further from the truth, as far as I'm concerned. The California voters put out there many years ago about marijuana and then left it up to the cities to implement it or not implement it. Vista did not implement it. And had been councils, previous councils had said, no, this isn't something we want to do, and did not. And then the people forced our hand with Proposition Z, Measure Z. And so the people of Vista have said that this is something that they wanted to pursue, was to have these cannabis shops in Vista. So as a city council, it is incumbent upon us, we have to follow the law that the people put out there for us. But we have to do it, as I believe it was Councilwoman Franklin said, in a very measured approach. And to do it in the best way that we can, keeping the safety of all of our residents in mind, which is what we're trying to do. And so I want people to know that, and we get a lot of emails. I get a lot of phone calls. And even when I'm out in the community, I hear from people personally who come up and talk to me and say they're not happy with this. And I can appreciate that. But it was a vote of the people. And so we're just trying to do what we can do as a city. And so I don't know if it was seconded yet. If it was, okay, if not, I'll second the motion. But I also want to recognize North County Coastal Prevention Coalition and the work that they have done. And in previous conversations as a council, when we were talking about smoking in public places, and then we had another conversation on electronic cigarettes, it was brought up, some of the statistics from many, many years ago, from the 70s, when, you know, 70 or 80% of the people seemed to be smoking. And then the numbers have turned around. We have very few people who are smoking. And in California, smoking really isn't allowed in any places anymore. And it was education. It was education at home. It was education at school. It was education through our community partners. And I really hope that we continue with that education. Vaping is not healthy for people. Vaping, when it first came out, I know people were using it, and it was prescribed by doctors. I know people who had it prescribed to them as a way to get them off of cigarettes. But what has happened is they've become much worse with vaping. We now know what vaping does to the lungs and the respiratory system. So I think this is an issue that we need to continue working on from all points, not just this one or that one. So I just want to say thank you to everybody who's commented. I want to say thank you to those of you who are out there in the education community trying to get our young people to understand that vaping is not something you should be doing at all, no matter what you have in your device. Vaping is very harmful to you. And so I will leave it at that, but thank you, Madam Mayor.
We all agree with that. So we have a motion by Councilmember Green and a second by Deputy Mayor Rigby. And so, City Clerk Valdez, please conduct our roll call vote.
I think Councilmember Franklin has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't looking there. I'm sorry.
One comment I forgot to make and I wanted to make was that I have not heard from or received any input from any lobbyist or anybody in the industry other than those prospective business owners that came into the council chambers and spoke publicly at a council meeting on this subject.
Same here. They don't call me.
I think they don't call any of us. So now, Terri Ann here. So City Clerk, please call for the roll call vote.
All right, you'll please state your vote when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
That item passes unanimously.
Okay, that brings us to our discussion item. We have one discussion item this evening. It's D1, COVID-19 Small Business Emergency Loan Program. Our Economic Development Director, Kevin Hamm, is going to provide the staff report. And so Kathy is going to bring him in.
Yeah, we're going to bring, there we go.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Perfect. During the April 14, 2020, city council meeting, at the request of individual council members, the city council, staff presented, during the council discussion, a conceptual plan for a small business emergency loan program. plan for a small business emergency loan program. A majority of the council directed staff to return with a proposal for consideration, and this is that proposal. Staff has reviewed the details of most of the operational COVID-19 business loan programs in existence or those that were under discussion prior to the finalizing of this, of this agenda report last week. At that time, of the 482 cities in California, there were only 16 cities that had a grant program, a loan program, or both. Depending upon the amount of funds and the amount of effort needed with the loan pro, loan program approval process, these programs can be very time consuming due to the staff time involved. If the city implements a program, staff recommends using an outside contractor to review and approve the loan requests, although additional staff time will be required to create the loan materials as well as package the loan applications. Based on the discussion during the April 14th council meeting, the following elements are suggested. The business must provide proof of economic hardship as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and evidence that they have applied for and have received approval of either the Economic Injury Disaster Loans, or what we call IDOL, or the Paycheck Protection Program, which we call PPP. It's recommended that the layup loan repayment term be no longer than 120 days. That loan funds can only be used to cover payroll, leases, mortgage payments, utilities, and accounts payable for the business premises here within the city of Vista. They must also state how the funds will allow them to be operational or will benefit the retention or rehiring of their staff. Loans should be for no more than $10,000 based on the number of employees. Businesses must have 20 or fewer employees, and the loan proceeds may only benefit the business operations physically located here. Home-based businesses and nonprofits are not eligible. They must be a Vista Business Enterprise with a valid business license prior to January 1st, 2020. The business must be in good standing with the city of Vista, be free of any code violations, outstanding judgments, tax liens, or any pending lawsuits. The business must not be in arrears with rent or mortgage payments as of March 1st, 2020. The business or owner must not have filed for bankruptcy, insolvency proceedings within the last five years. They must be willing to sign a promissory note. Staff recommends, as we discussed earlier, contracting with someone to oversee the loan approval piece. In this instance, we're recommending the North County Small Business Development Center to review the loans. The costs for these loans to be reviewed are between 2% and 4%. The North County Small Business Development Center is already performing similar work, and they're also doing the same function for another city. The total amount of funding for the loans and the approval cost is recommended not to exceed $500,000. And then at the last meeting, the council asked if we would reach out to several businesses to see if they may be interested in it. This time, he understood that those in business part really didn't need that, they had capacity. So we looked at those that might be ones that would use it. So we reached out to 20 separate companies. We have heard back from 10. A summary of what we have heard is that of all 10 that we talked to, all of them had applied for the PPP or the Paycheck Protection Program. Some of them did not qualify, one received funding, and the rest are waiting. Of those 10 companies, seven of them did not apply for the IDOL program, one received a grant, one did not qualify, and the last has not heard yet. I wanted to add that the IDOL program is the only program that will allow for repayment of the gap funding we're recommending. So the PPP program, those proceeds cannot be used to repay the grant. Who would the city use as the program described? The funds would go to activities within their organization, specifically as we've discussed. I should add that, excuse me, that these funds will need to be paid within 120 days, and most of these programs will be funded or probably have feedback by next week. Staff is recommending there are several alternatives that you could look at. If the city chooses not to go forward with the loan program, one option is to increase marketing efforts for Vista businesses throughout the city or in a specific area like the downtown. Another alternative would be to have city staff focus on helping our local businesses apply for and becoming more successful in pursuing both the federal and the state funding. We're finding that many of these businesses, especially the smaller ones, really just don't have the capacity or supporting them to direct them in the right direction, but they might need a little bit more handholding, and that's one option that we could have as well. If the city council moves forward with the program as presented and recommended, we suggest that $500,000 be the amount that we put towards this program, and it be allocated from the Structural Deficit Reserve Fund. Staff recommends that the council discuss the city small business emergency loan program, and if there is consensus, adopt the attached resolution authorizing the establishment of a gap loan program for the city of Vista businesses directly affected by the COVID-19 pandemic, using the unallocated fund balance of $500,000 in the Structural Deficit Reserve Fund. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin, Mr. Hamm. And I'll kind of start out with this, because when I originally talked about this, our original discussion, we were talking about a gap program, and I think things have changed since we first discussed this, at least in my opinion, that Congress has now passed the second part of it, and the money is starting to flow again to those people that didn't get money. Plus, it can't be repaid out of the PPP, the fund that they were talking, that we were thinking it had been repaid out of. So I, I'm not going to be supporting this loan, I won't be supporting it as a loan program. We're, I don't, we're not a bank, and I don't, I think, I don't think I would, I won't support that as a loan program. So I'm going to, I'll kind of, I just want to throw that out there, and I'll hear what everybody else has to say. And so I will start, let's see, last time I started with Councilwoman Ferris, I'll start the other end again with our Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have several concerns on this as well. We were talking initially about it being a gap for people to use while they were waiting for their funding to come in. The funding that they're getting from the federal government cannot be used, as you pointed out, to repay this loan. So now they have another loan in addition to all of the other things that are going on with them that they have to try to pay back within 120 days. How are they going to do that? And that puts us in a position of probably a higher rate of default than we had talked about in our last council meeting. And as we talked at our last council meeting, also in another agenda item, we talked about the economic, the fiscal impact that this whole situation is going to have on our city. And we reflected back on what happened in the 2008, 2009 recession and what the city went through, which is why we have put together this reserve fund, is to get the city through this time. Now, we had anticipated through the, from the $9.3 million that we have, that we would be using the $8.8 million. That was an estimate. Listening to the governor today talk about his four phases and how long it would be before we get to the final of the four phases, and it would not be until that time that the rest of the businesses that could would open. We will still see a lot of businesses that do not reopen, they're not going to be able to. So we could be looking at even a longer recession for our city, for our state. We could be looking at more of a loss to the city than the initial $8.8 that we were thinking. And that $500,000 between the $8.8 and the $9.3 was all we have left in that fund to work for the city. And we are not a bank. I feel badly for our, our businesses. I feel badly for our employees. I feel badly for everybody that's going through this. And, but I don't think that we as a city would be doing a service to our community if we use all of the money that we had in our reserve, the, you know, the $500,000 that might be left, if we still need that, if this goes on longer or goes deeper than we had originally anticipated. I think as the city leaders, it's incumbent upon us to keep our eye on what it is that we need to be doing for our city, for all of our community, for all of our residents, and our city services. And so I am not going to be in favor of doing this, and I, I am, however, as Mr. Hamm had mentioned. We can do other things in the city as far as marketing and promotions for our businesses, all of our businesses throughout the city, not just in downtown, and I appreciate downtown businesses, but all throughout our entire city. We have a lot of businesses. And so I would be in favor of working out some kind of a promotional program to highlight our businesses and do promotional materials for them, including those in our regular, you know, our Vista magazine and our weekly blasts, or, you know, something where we highlight some of our businesses. I am, and maybe do special events when we're able to have events again that highlight and include our businesses. So I think there are ways that we as a city can support our business community, but I don't think turning us into a bank with money that we might not be able to afford down the road is one thing that we should be doing. So I would not be in support of this program. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Franklin.
Thank you. I would agree with you, Mayor, that as a bridge gap or short-term loan, it would be very difficult for businesses to repay this amount of money if they actually have a demonstrated deficit in revenues and profitability. For them to repay it in the 120 days that was proposed would be very, very difficult. In terms of marketing for the disaster relief loan or for PPP, it's my understanding that basically those funds are exhausted. I, I don't have any better information on this than anybody else or any other public source, but there were so many applications that were not able to be funded for PPP in the first round, that Congress did allocate a second round of funding. But it's probably accurate that the majority of those requests that are going to be funded in round two were already, the, the applications had already been made with lenders, many of them not yet submitted to the SBA, but many of those applications had already been made. So I think it might be a little bit of a false hope to encourage businesses to apply at this point for some of the programs that are likely already exhausted. However, I do think it would make sense not to spend funds or to hire an advertising firm, but I think we should absolutely point our small business owners to resources in the community that can help them. You know, the, the PPP application is short, it's not complicated, you know, it's much easier than filing a tax return. I would encourage any business owner who has not taken the time yet, reach out to your local bank. PayPal is now offering to process your PPP loan application. So I would encourage folks to put their application in, it's very easy. The IDL loan, the disaster relief loan, is about a half-page application, very, very short, very easy to fill out. So, you know, folks shouldn't be intimidated by the forms, they're actually quite simple. If you go and you read them, you'll see that it's, it's really very easy. So I would encourage folks in that way. You know, I think the way we structured this program through our discussion and staff has brought us back a proposal based on our discussion, I think there'd be a very limited number of businesses that would choose to avail themselves of such a, a number one, a very small amount, and number two, with such specific terms for the use without a mechanism from the federal government to repay these funds, only giving them 120 days, I think is not really workable. In its present form, it's not something that I'm, I have a lot of encouraging feelings about. However, you know, I still want to hear from my other colleagues, and I want to see if there's any more public support. And Mr. Hamm, you have mentioned you spoke and received input from 10 of the 20 businesses that, that you reached out to. Did any of the 10 indicate that this program would be something that they would be inclined to apply for, and that the way it's structured, it would be a benefit to their business?
I had one say yes, and another said maybe.
That, that kind of fits with my assessment. I mean, I think it's likely if we did authorize the program, there's probably a good chance with the way it's written, we might not even disperse the entire half million dollars. And one other question I had, you said it's going to be between $10,000 and $20,000, 2% and 4% of the amount. Is that amount to administrate the emergency loans? Is that included in the half million dollar number for the entire program, the way it's been structured?
Yes. The loans would go up to $10,000, and the $500,000 that we put aside would include all the loans as well as the fees that we would pay to the third-party administrator.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Green.
All right. So I did really want to come up with something to help our businesses, and I think after doing a lot of research and also watching the Oceanside Council meeting and kind of listening to their Economic Development Department, you know, the, they reached out to, they got, you know, feedback from 39 businesses, and I want to say, you know, less than 10% of those businesses got the funds and, you know. Knowing now that you can only repay the money through the IDOL loan, which per the application, they ask for your routing number and account number, they wire the money within a few days. You know, the IDOL loan is the only one you can repay. Not being able to repay with the PPP, it doesn't really, you know, make sense as a bridge loan, in my opinion, like I initially thought that it would, because they can't pay us back with the money that they're getting. So, you know, and the way that this is written, when you look at the resolution, item number five states that the business applicant must provide written proof that it's been approved for either one of those loans. So that's a stipulation of this loan. And then item number nine says they shall repay within two weeks of receiving sufficient funding under their approved IDOL and/or PPP loan, which we can't even have that stipulation in the resolution because it doesn't work out. So I, I think that our intent was good, but given the ever-changing kind of fluidity of the situation right here, it's just not practical to do. With that said, though, and knowing that we have $500,000 in our structural deficit, not that I would want to spend all of that anyways, but I do like the idea of marketing or helping market our local businesses. And, you know, I was thinking maybe something we send out as a city in the form of like a, a takeout coupon book for our restaurants, or maybe like opening, you know, businesses opening for our, you know, lawyers, or, you know, maybe a realtor wants to give a credit to a school or something, I don't know. But if we could reach out to our local businesses and maybe just send our Vista residents, just like I say in our Vista magazine, hey, here's a Vista Businesses coupon book, and you get, you know, this bunch of a discount at these restaurants. And I'm sure if we reached out to the chamber, they'd have a lot of businesses that wanted to participate. And I mean, our business licensing department obviously has every business in the city, you know, all of their information. So I really think it is an opportunity for us to kind of, you know, lock arms with our business community, let them know how important they are to us. There's no doubt that by losing $8.8 million, you know, yeah, we're taking a hit, but they're totally out of business. So how can, as the phases evolve, how can we as a city, you know, walk alongside our businesses or even just kind of lift them up to where they once were? So I would love to look at any programs like that. I also wrote something down here, I've got so many papers, I'm shuffling here. Let me see what my other question was here. Takeout coupon book, and then also just marketing assistance. So that was something that I was wondering is, how would that look? I know I like the coupon book idea, but marketing assistance, is that something that they would reach out for like grant money, or is that something like as a city, we could put together something, or is that a whole different discussion altogether that we could spend hours talking about right now, Kevin?
Well, there's a couple of ways we can do it. You know, the chamber or other groups in the past have done something that's called a co-op, where the business pays a little bit, and then the city could cover the amount as well. Maybe this is the co without the op, you know, where we're doing the marketing and we're providing that to help bring that business into the downtown. And we're also discussing at the staff level, several additional ideas that will help support them in addition to marketing.
Okay. And I, and I know, like, kind of like Deputy Mayor Rigby said, I always hear the downtown, and I love our downtown, but we have a thriving business park, we got a bunch of amazing businesses that I frequent over there in District 1, and in my district, District 2, and I know in Shadow Ridge, there's some great businesses. Two, and I know in Shadow Ridge, there's some great businesses over there too. And I just want to make sure that the marketing that we're doing isn't just for one specific area. All of our districts do meet in downtown, but I know that we all frequent businesses all over the place. And, you know, I, some great Thai restaurants and Vietnamese restaurants in District Three over there that I go to, and my favorite wings are in Shadow Ridge and my favorite burritos are in District One. So I want to make sure that everybody, you know, kind of has the support of the city and know that we really care and we want to do things that are effective. I don't want to have a business loan program just to say I did a business loan. Nobody's going to apply for it, it's not going to help anybody. I mean, yeah, it sounds good that we did something, but it's not really effective. I want to do things for our community that are effective, that are going to make a difference. And I know that's what my council wants to do. So if there's any way that as a staff, you could come back to us with effective things we can do to help our businesses, I know I 100% support it and I'm sure my council is also behind it moving forward. So that's it, thank you.
I was going to move on to Councilmember Contreras, but I see Councilmember Franklin waving at me too. Can you wait till Councilmember Contreras and then go on the end of her? Is that okay? Or something, was it, Councilmember Greens?
I just wanted Councilmember Green to remember District Four.
And I was going to say that too, because we have to remember the whole city, all the, okay, Councilmember Contreras.
Hey, I've been, I've been hosting some of Connie's kitchen café stuff on really great Instagram. Oh my gosh, their food is so good. So, you know, I know as a council, we definitely want to be here for our small businesses and I think with all the moving parts of the situation and at the federal level, the different types of dispersments that are happening, I think the direction that was provided and how we got to this point, you know, it's just, it's difficult to construct something that is going to be effective. And so in looking over this program, it, it doesn't seem like a lot of the small businesses that really need the help are even going to be able to apply for this. And so, you know, I really appreciate the discussion that we're having and the comments made by all of my colleagues. And, you know, I do agree to a certain extent with, with all the comments made. But, you know, what is it that we could do? I think that's where we're kind of stuck on, we're back to square one, right? What is it that we could do to help our small businesses? And, you know, I like that discussion, possible discussion of like a coupon book, you know, maybe it's, this is something where, you know, additional partnership on top of what we already have with the Chamber of Commerce, you know, maybe there could be some kind of directive where we are able to, to, one, survey more small businesses and see, you know, what are specific needs. Maybe we need to get a little bit more specific to what the needs of small businesses are. I mean, I know the fact, we looked as a city, you know, we just discussed about our restrooms and cleaning those every two hours and what, you know, what that does, it's administrative kind of a nightmare and it definitely has an economic cost to it, a high price tag. And so when we're looking at our small businesses here in Vista, you know, what are, what are the increased costs to even do small business in a pandemic like COVID-19, right, where you have to, you know, break a hole at 70% plus and all these different products to clean? I mean, is there a thing that as a council, we can start looking at some of the, the real burden of costs that our small businesses have in the specific environment for those businesses that are operating right now? So I don't know what kind of, I don't know what we could do, but I think there's definitely something. It just, this is not, it's not getting to the heart of those businesses that are really struggling. You know, at the end of the day, it's only going to go to those who are already going to be receiving funds and we discussed the issue of repayment last time and a little bit right now. And so 120 days for repayment. It's almost like this would need to be structured kind of like a grant and I don't think there's any support for. So, um, yeah, I, it just seems like we're at square one, but I definitely, we all as a council, I know we want to do something really effective for our small businesses and leverage some possible of this emergency reserve to show a return on investment for our taxpayers and, and, but to do it because it has an end goal and it's actually going to be a strategy for our small businesses that's successful.
Mayor.
Who's waving?
It's me, Patrick. If I might, and if the council's supportive, we'd be happy to bring back ideas for you to consider at a future council meeting or at the next council meeting for that matter.
Yes, that's what I was going to ask if you could do. I think all five of us have said pretty much the same thing. And I would very, very much like to have a discussion of what options we do have as a city to help with promotions for our businesses throughout the city, all four districts.
Thing I was going to say is if we could, if we could wait until we hear who's going to open when, what they're going to let open and maybe start, start there. When, I keep thinking about restaurants and the seating and, you know, like inside seating and I keep, I was asking Patrick, you know, how come we, can we expand, you know, if they have like 40 tables and they now have 20 tables, can they expand them out on the, you know, can we expand the sidewalk for them somehow? Sit in and maybe put some plants there and have the tables outside so they have more outside seating so they still can have more tables, but farther apart and people would, you know, it'd be easier to, because it'll make it worth their while to open. That's what I worry, that if it's too small, if the restaurant's too small and you can't, you have to take out half their tables, is it really worth their, the money or the worthwhile to cook for that few people? I don't know. I don't know those answers, but maybe, and we won't know that for a couple of weeks yet, what, what they're going to let open and, you know, which, which businesses are going to let open? So maybe we have to wait a little bit and, and, and then attack whatever it is open and how can we help that, the first phase and the second phase or whatever. Anyway, that's my defense. So where are we? Oh, I guess I need to, am I, I think, am I in charge? Kathy, I think, do we have?
We actually need to take, yeah, sure. Recession to allow for public comments.
Minutes to be received?
Yes.
And that is how many minutes again?
Three minutes.
So we're going to take a three-minute recess for public comments to be received. Unless I hear anybody else, anybody else waving at me? Seeing no one waving, okay, we'll go, we'll recess for three minutes.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had to, I had to come in, that was muted, which Granicus picks nothing up that's muted. Yeah, so at the start of the meeting, we were like, there's no audio. Yeah, the mic was on. That's why they could hear you.
Okay, do we have everyone? I think we're ready to start whenever you are, Mayor. Okay. We're now back in session. The opportunity to provide public comment on this item is now closed. City Clerk Valdez, please share the public comments received.
Thank you. We received one public comment from Rachel Belt, Chief Executive Officer of Vista Chamber of Commerce. The Vista Chamber of Commerce is in support of any program that provides assistance to our local business community. The chamber is prepared to partner with the state to support Vista businesses. Thank you to our city staff and city council for working on this item. And that's it.
Okay. Then I'll go to the council for comments and I guess I'll, I'll start in the middle. How about Councilmember Franklin to have additional comments or questions? And then I would ask, and while you're thinking about that, we can think about a motion if while we're there. Franklin, we'll start with you, Councilmember Franklin.
I don't have any additional comments or questions.
Okay. Councilmember Green?
I just want to say, I think it's great that the Chamber wants to work hard for us. I want to make sure we utilize them as a resource. As far as a motion, I don't really have one because I don't think I want to move forward with that particular program. I do like the idea of a coupon book or maybe even a virtual coupon that we can get out immediately and easily update per social media. But aside from that note, just thanks for the discussion with my council and I'm looking forward to moving forward and doing as much as we can for the business community.
Okay. Councilmember Contreras?
I don't have any additional comments. Again, you know, the city can do something that specifically can help those businesses that aren't already being helped, that'd be great. But it doesn't look like this is the program for that. So, and I don't have any other motion as well, so.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to echo my council members, I don't have a motion on this, but I do appreciate the conversation. I appreciate very much the discussion that we've had. And Kevin, thank you to you and your staff for the work that you've put in on this item. I, I know it was a lot of work and I appreciate it very much. I am very, very supportive and I look forward to having come back to us, a program for promotions and to see what that looks like and even if it's done in phases that go along with the phases of the reopening, starting, you know, as soon as we can to help our businesses. So I think it's been a great discussion, thank you, everybody.
So with that, do you have enough direction then? Councilor or city manager, do you have enough direction or Kevin, whoever from us? Yes, I see a head shaking, okay. Okay, so then with that, we just go on to oral communications. Do we have any oral communications? Our city clerk, do we have any oral communication?
No, we have not received any oral communication this evening.
Okay, with that, we'll go to remarks and I will read you my remarks first and then I'll go follow you. I want to remind all the Vistins again that if you haven't already filled out the 2020 census, that there's still time. Currently Vista has a reporting rate of 57.4%, better than my last report, which is 50.9, so 57.4, but we still have a long ways to go. It's important because the census provides a clear picture of who lives where so we can make sure Vista has an equal voice and a fair share of the federal resources. Fill out the census survey this week by mail or online so that fewer census workers will be required to go door-to-door later this year. So learn more at 2020census.gov. And the only other thing I have is that a free or low-cost internet access is available during the COVID-19 crisis. Dial the regional health center at 211 or check online at 211sandiego.org. And the center also provides local services, referrals, including food, shelter and health-related issues. So you can just dial that number if you need some help in some area and they can, they can help you with that. And so with that, I will go to, I'll go down the line here this time, I'll go again, I'll go Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say thank you to staff for all the work that you're doing for us and especially during these trying times, things are a little bit mixed up and everybody is stepping up to the plate in sometimes in different roles than they're used to. And I appreciate the effort, I appreciate the work and I want to say thank you to our community, to our Vistins for participating and for doing all that you can also to help with the situation. So stay safe Vista and remember always, Vista rocks.
Councilmember Franklin?
I just close by saying, you know, our hearts are with all of our business people, all of our medical staff that are working at risk to themselves and all those in essential industries that are going to work every day and exposing themselves. We appreciate all that you're doing for us. We are going to continue to work as a city to reopen safely and to provide recreation that our families need, to help our business owners access the support that they need, both so that they can reopen safely and so that they're provided for economically. And again, we thank all of our staff here at the City of Vista, they're doing a great job through this crisis and we really appreciate all that they're doing. Most of them are continuing to work remotely. A lot of our, our public works team is still out there on the streets doing their jobs and we really appreciate all of them for the good work they're doing. Thank you.
Councilmember Green?
All right, definitely want to echo all that. We have the best staff in the entire universe, so thank you guys so much. Also, thanks to all of our first responders boots on the ground out there. I also want to thank my council, I'm sure it's the same for you as it is for me, more phone calls and emails and tags on social media than ever before. And I've heard nothing but great responses from our constituents with your guys' response rates because we're all responding like crazy. So if your thumbs are cramping up from responding to so many constituents, thank you guys for just working so hard. This is really, it's been a lot more, so props to you guys for all of that. And lastly, and most importantly, today is Taco Tuesday and I ordered my tacos super early from 508 Tavern in Vista today and they're sold out already. So if you want tacos from them, you can get them, but it's very important that you support your local businesses and order tacos on Tuesdays. Woo, love you Vista.
Okay. Councilmember Contreras?
Sure, you know, thank you again to staff and, and I see public works out here every day, you know, continuing to, especially with the heavy rains that we had, you know, help us have a smoother ride. But, you know, again, also thank you to my colleagues for us having a great discussion and I can't wait till I can go out and again, I'm every- and I can't wait till I can go out and again, I'm every, I'm going to say it all the time, I can't wait till I can go and pick up trash again. It's going to be a great day. Have a good one, everyone. Take care.
City Manager Patrick Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. I just echo the comments made by many of you about thoughts and prayers go out to the business owners, the employees that have been affected as well as the public health officials.
City Attorney, Carol Piper?
I'm in accord with the city manager, but I'd also like to thank the city council. You've been incredibly professional and helpful throughout this and we certainly appreciate it.
Our city clerk, Kathy Valdez?
I think tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and before I adjourn, I wanted to adjourn in the memory and, and honor of Howard Amen, he just passed away a couple of days ago. He was, it said Howard Amen has been affiliated with the Boys, with the Boys Club since he joined the Pasadena, California club when he was seven years old. But he was, he was given 42 years of continuing dedication to the Vista Boys Club and the Vista Boys and Girls Club as, when it was renamed in 1990. So he was, he was there for so many years, I remember him being there. He retired as director of the Vista Boys and Girls Club in January 2002, but he currently serves on the Board of Directors and is chairman of Vista Boys and Girls Club Foundation, a major funding agency for the club. We just lost him a couple of days ago, so I just wanted to adjourn on his, in his memory and, and the honor of him. So anyway, so that's that, and with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.